All right, this meeting is called to order.
Everybody.
Guys, calling the meeting to order. Thank you so much. Please stand for the pledge.
We have to stay some here. She says, what occasion, if it's called, that he can justice for all.
A few of y'all almost got hauled to jail for continuing to talk and the mayor called the meeting to order. And the chief has many handcuffs back there, so. He was talking. The same.
Councilor Mr. Eric?
Here.
Councilor Bowen?
Here.
Councilor Bishwa?
Right.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Here.
Mayor Durham?
Here.
All right, we do not have any public comment this evening. Moving on to approval of the meeting minutes for the August 6, 2025 regular meeting, because council had an opportunity to review the minutes.
Um, I have one question. Um, what is some of the back, staple to the back?
Those are the comments that were made during the public hearing.
Is that correct? And by reference, yeah, by reference in a statement within the minutes. Those are incorporated as part of the minutes. So they're referred to in the actual minutes.
Okay.
So it's a path to why there's.
Okay. With that being answered, I will make a motion that we approve the minutes from the August 6, 2025 regular council meeting.
Well, second.
Go please. Mr. Eric?
Yes.
Councilor Bishwa?
Sure.
Councilor Bowen?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Durham?
Yes.
All right, moving on to reports. City Administrator, Dr. Salvato?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Uh, Finance Director, Monique Edwards.
Good evening, Mayor Durham and council members. I'd like to report on June's gaming industry report. On a statewide basis, the entire industry's AGP was down $3.8 million or 3.8% over May. When, um, the numbers were looked at, Purple Creek's AGP numbers all were up. And the Coinin and Table Drop numbers all were down. So, just starting with AGP compared to the prior month, AGP for Purple Creek was up $403,000 or 2.4%. Compared to June of 2024, uh, AGP was up 960,000 or 6.3%. And then compared to the prior year, year-to-date, AGP was up 3.5 million or 4.1%. The Coinin and Table Drop numbers, as I said, were down. So compared to the previous month of May, they were down $182,000 or 0.1%. Compared to the previous year in June, Coinin and Table Drop were down 1.9 million or 1%. And compared to the prior year, year-to-date numbers were down 18 million or 1.9%. In June, uh, market share increased to 16.8 over May's number of 16.6. And, um, market share increased over the previous year by 0.5.
Uh, before we move on to presentations, I just want to say a huge thank you to all city staff who were involved in the veterans rally this weekend. Um, micro steps perspective, it was an outstanding event. There were minimal issues that I was aware of. Um, a lot of bikes coming into town. Uh, we had a little rain on Saturday that didn't really put a damper on things. And it was interesting riding down the street during the parade, um, just people left and right saying, thank you for bringing it back to Purple Creek. Um, it was a really positive, by positive energy. I know there was minimal issues with law enforcement, EMS fire. Um, Public Works was very helpful with a lot of things. And then Marie, um, did an outstanding job as our marketing and special events director. So I just want to say thank you to everybody who played a part in that because it was, it was really cool.
So we go back to reports for the season.
Yeah.
You okay?
Absolutely.
I just had a request.
Yep.
The skate park isn't constructed. So contractor is working and hopefully we get the skate park repaired and then we'll have the delivery of all of the ramps. We've already purchased them. They just have to, uh, deliver them once we get concrete set and open the skate park.
So exciting. I know this, now the students will stop bothering me about when it's here. Okay, moving on to presentations on community of caring business plan for childcare. Ted Gordon.
Thank you so much, Ted Gordon, Director for Community of Caring, uh, at the Asperman Center in A and C Weston, right here in our fair city. Uh, so I wanted to first, um, I think Lisa's gonna try to put on the screen. Terry was gonna put on the screen. It's been a clicking. Um, we have a, a new scaled, uh, back footprint for the childcare center that we're very excited about. I think, uh, everybody's going to, uh, really like this, the new footprint. We had, you know, originally we had a, a building that had, uh, east and west wings on it. We really wanted to scale that back, uh, just based on, uh, maybe of caring's risk and community need. Uh, we will be phasing this in if, uh, necessary over the years, but I wanted to talk a little bit about the current, uh, design. So it's, uh, 6,700 square feet. I'll just hold it up, sorry. Um, 6,700 square feet, uh, this will be, uh, three active classrooms and a classroom that we will, um, that we will use if, uh, need arises. The three classrooms will accommodate, uh, 58 kids, so we'll have eight in the infant toddler classroom, which should be a combined classroom, uh, which is the limit for infant toddler in, in one classroom. Uh, we'll have 20 in the preschool, uh, classroom and 30 in the, um, i- in the school age classroom, which will be, uh, uh, down below in the, uh, in the walkout level. Um, which is kind of like a walkout basement. Um, there you go.
Technology.
All right, so, um, we designed the facade, TDG Architecture, designed the facade to be in line with the wishes of, of the historic preservation and planning. Uh, we think this is a great look for, uh, town and we tried to be as efficient with the design in construction costs as possible. Also has a nice big playground out back that will be, of course, fenced off. Um, so we are starting with, uh, again, about a 4,000 square foot decrease in square footage initially. It'll be phased, uh, as the need, uh, dictates in the future. Um, we're hopefully looking at doing a groundbreaking if everything is looking good, um, mid-September. Uh, so we are thrilled to be able to announce that. We also will have, and I know I was gonna wait until the end, but I just can't wait. Um, we're also gonna be having a gala, uh, fundraising gala, October 14th at the Chaminé. So kudos to the Chaminé and the other casinos that are going to help put that on. Um, so more to come on that. Um, all right, go ahead and click forward, dear Lisa. So I think everybody in the room, it's no surprise what the need of childcare is in the community. We really haven't had a comprehensive, integrated childcare, um, other than Head Start, which has been a godsend. And, and have done amazing things over the last 20 years, uh, through Head Start. But we're trying to make this, uh, to expand hours, days of operation. And, uh, so that's what we're really focusing on. Um, we will be, uh, starting with, uh, Monday through Friday, 11-hour days. So we'll be open from 7:30 in the morning to 6:30 in the evening. Um, and, uh, we will be accommodating about 117 days when Head Start cannot be open or is not open. Um, in addition to the, the regular school days, so summers, Fridays, uh, spring break, uh, winter break, all of those things. So we want to, uh, do as much as we possibly can with a five-day-a-week service initially. Again, need will dictate whether we expand that and how soon. Um, and so we want to make sure the building itself is going to be able to get, wings can be added on and, uh, secure funding for that before we venture into phase two and eventually base them. Um, Community of Caring is looking at, had three operational models. One was to partner with a for-profit or a nonprofit operator. Um, and to completely contract that to the operator. Uh, that still could be a possibility. The, the scenario that we think mitigates risk and allows community of caring as much oversight as possible would be to contract a third party with community of caring's oversight and initiating a, uh, policy council-type committee that can, uh, advise community of caring's board, uh, in how to, uh, operate. And then potentially, uh, let that entity take that over, uh, down the road rather than upfront. Uh, we think that that is, makes the most sense from a business model standpoint. Our board was very involved in researching, uh, the different models. And, uh, so I'm very happy to, uh, what we settled on, which was being able to look towards an operator at some point, but initially, community of caring will have a great deal of oversight. In fact, Patty Waddle was here for the work session and was formerly, uh, ran the preschool and Head Start here in, in town. Was very interested in mentoring, uh, a director for free, uh, putting in her time. She is that promised to this, uh, great project. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and skip forward. So I think I covered hours of operations. Staffing cost for this project is gonna be for a five-day-a-week, 11-hour day, three-classroom facility will be about $600,000 a year. Um, and then, uh, also, uh, operations cost is going to be about $100,000. That will include utilities, when we, uh, insurance, which is of course very significant in a, in a childcare setting. Um, and then supplies and copiers and all of that. Uh, I've had the question before about, uh, food costs. Uh, I'm gonna be partnering with the Asperman Center Community of Caring to be able to provide food at the new facility. Um, and that will be through a, a, a program that I'm not gonna dig for, um, but it's basically a wash. So the, the food program is covered through, uh, federal funds. Um, and we can feed breakfast, lunch, snacks, all under that, uh, grant without any, uh, cost to. Um, on the revenue side of things, and let's stay right there. Let's stay right there. I'm gonna back up. This is a great, uh, slide that I don't want to go past. This shows some of the commitment of funding from, for the construction project itself. And I would like to just be able to, to go through this really, really quickly. So we have currently $2.5 million that is, uh, committed funds. So C, CDEX grant, 800,000, uh, community of caring's match of 266. Uh, the DOLA, if, uh, all of this goes through this evening, uh, for 1 billion, and that's through the, uh, the DOLA. What? Sorry, I just had a brain lancer. Energy and Mineral Impact Grant. And then we also have, uh, numerous funders that, uh, have ponied up a lot of funds here. So, um, Myron Stratton, uh, just committed to 100,000. Uh, Betcher Foundation, 35,000, Elmar, uh, 50,000, SSR Mining, thank you very much, guys, uh, 15,000, Chaffler, 10,000. Um, and then we also have, uh, Brittany Pedersen, Representative Pedersen's promise of funding that we have not counted in this mix yet for a million, 15,000. Um, and so that is amazing, but we're not counting that because it's not yet appropriated, but we're very confident that we'll be. Uh, we're also applying to Gates Family Foundation, Ant, Oldger, Buell. Um, and so there's so many, uh, people that have committed or are looking at committing funding to this project. Um, and certainly, uh, no small chore, the city of Purple Creek and their endorsement or, uh, uh, wanting to be lead applicant for this DOLA grant is just huge, as well as your support of, of staff and all the time that you guys, uh, put in. So thank you very much for that. Um, and then just from a, going back to the operational side of things. Um, gonna just go over that and we'll probably close right after that. I don't want to take too much time. Um, so tuition costs for this project, if everybody was paying, we had a full facility and tuition costs alone would actually cover the cost of all of the expenditures. We know being in Southern Teller County that we have a 78% of poverty rate or, or free to reduce lunch, what I always do at it, as it before. Um, and so that's significant. So we are looking at offsetting costs every other way that we possibly can, because we know tuition is not, we're not going to be able to realistically, uh, cover the costs of, of expenses through tuition. But there will be a lot of families that will qualify for CCAP, through social services, state funding, opportunities, um, and as well as opportunities through Head Start. So, uh, we are looking at potentially for revenue, uh, DOLA Gaming Impact Grant. Currently, community of caring receives a gaming impact allocation every year, uh, and we have for the last 22 years. So we're very confident in that funding stream and we're projecting that at 400,000. The 21st Century Grant, um, this Durham had a really good question for Mary. I don't think she explained that, uh, that potentially could be 214,000. Other grant funding, 100,000 a year. Head Start, we know this is pretty secure funding at 72,336. Universal pre-K, uh, at 40,000. Um, childcare contribution tax credit, 100,000. We know that we're really getting, uh, a foothold on that, on that tax credit and we're going to be reliant on that. Um, and this is not having any committed funding yet from the casinos. All the casinos are very supportive and they will be coming in with that. We just don't know what that amount was. Um, there is also a chance down the road, at the earliest would be 2027, where we could look at a special taxing district and go into the voters to potentially. But that, um, we're not also counting that. We want to make sure that this plan is sound. Um, for the first couple of years of operation, we're pretty darn confident in most of these numbers. Um, we'll come back to city council and we'll update you in terms of what the strategy continues to be in terms of the business plan. We'll also come back and do regular reports on the construction. Um, but that kind of is the biggest part of my presentation. I don't want to take a lot more time, but if there are questions, I would certainly like to be able to have a shot at. These guys did all the work, of course. Looks like if you give most of the funding, you're, you're, you're pretty confident you're gonna get, you're in good shape. Yeah, we're, we're very confident, even, even if for some reason the appropriations from Brittany Pedersen's funds uh, does not come through, we have another four, four grants that are already in, uh, in the hotbed. It will be in the next two weeks. Um, there's a lot of folks that have been hearing about childcare, uh, challenges in Southern Teller County for many years. And we've been doing the task force since 2018. Uh, so we've, we've made a big splash, um, and I, I'm very confident. I, in fact, I really have no doubts that, that come, uh, the end of the year, we're gonna, we're gonna have all of the funding.
Do you just have, um, one question about the, so Patty's willingness to mentor the, the director position? What certifications does that person have to have? And how long, I mean, do they have to fully go through a post-secondary program to get their operator license or what?
Great question. I know that there's numerous certifications, numerous credentials that they need to have. We're working with TPEC, uh, Teller Parker Lee Childhood, and they do that component, the training aspect of that, as well as Epic, who we worked with to get this far. Um, was a contractor with the state. So we'll, we'll be doing a big deep dive, uh, with, uh, you know, not only what's required. I know Patty knows what's required of the lead teacher and the assistant, uh, for each one of those classrooms. She knows what the criteria are for, for each one of those classrooms and what's required in the toddler versus preschool versus the school-aged kids. As far as the director qualifications, um, she can speak a lot better to that than I can right now, but, but tho- those are all things that will be, uh, unwinding in the next couple of months. As soon as we get the groundbreaking behind us and we start focusing on all of those. We'd also like to hire a director as early as first quarter of 2026 to start repairing everything that's going to be required in terms of licensure and being able to integrate their expertise with the, the contractors, uh, and the design team, which has already been going on. Patty's been very valuable for that. So a lot more to happen, but we're on it.
That was very sudden.
That's awesome.
Thanks too.
You so much. Thanks to this community. Thanks, everybody that's contributed and supported us. Thanks so much in the city.
Thanks for your work.
Moving on to SSR, Purple Creek and Victor Gold Mining Company for the quarterly presentation.
All right, just ready to roll. So Bjorn Meyer, General Manager of Purple Creek and Victor Mining Company. Uh, we're gonna give a update this evening on a few things that are happening here in the recent, uh, few weeks and months. So I just wanna, as part of our value share, is we had our first, uh, CCNB Family Day back on August 9th, about a weekend ago, and it was a great opportunity to have over 500, uh, employees and their family members come and partake in celebrating, obviously, the mining operation. Also for us to manage to extend a huge amount of gratitude for, obviously, the last five or six months of the integration under SSR ownership. We also wanna like the Purple Creek tent. You guys did a heck of a job on Friday when the wind was out of control. And again, on Saturday morning, getting that thing erected and decommissioned when things were done later today on Saturday. But it was a fantastic opportunity, well-received. We hadn't had one, I guess, in over 10 years, so. So, you know, there was like definitely no complaints about it. The weather cooperated and, you know, we had a lot of fun. So just wanted to thank everyone for their time celebrating together, so definitely supports our value better together. We got Mr. Tony. Matt Reese. Tony will talk a little bit about.
Yeah, thanks Bjorn. So, uh, as you said, my name's Tony Matt Reese. Been here a couple times, a few years since I've been here. Um, so Tony Matt Reese, so for the Sustainability Environmental Department at CCNB. Um, got a couple slides here. Gonna start talking through a little bit of the history of the mining district. Uh, go through some local economic numbers, have a recap of 2024, um, and then move into some of the future mining, um, some details on that. So we got this slide here. We just put together a timeline, uh, really just to kind of highlight the rich mining history that's been in this district. So dating back all the way to the late 1800s, when gold was first discovered, late 1890s, uh, creating the district's first millionaire by 1891. Um, by, you know, not shortly after that, by 1900, the population of the district rose substantially, uh, to over 50,000 people, over 500 mines operated in the district. Uh, really during this early period, it was kind of a peak production, um, that came out of the Purple Creek District. Um, moving forward a little bit, get into the World War era, World War I and II, into the 40s. Uh, production kind of slowed down a little bit through this time, um, all the way kind of through until the 70s and 80s, things started to pick back up with, uh, CCV gold mining, constructing the first heat bleach operation. And then really in 94, which was the formation of our permit that we still operate under today. So, uh, production of the Crescent Permit, uh, which began in 1994. Um, and then that brings us to today, so 2025, and SSR purchased the mine from Newmont back in March. Um, and also we continue to operate today. Right, so a bit of a recap of our local economics, sustainability, some of the initiatives over the past years, just to recap really of, of 2024. Uh, we can see the community investment highlights there, a total of almost 450,000, uh, donated to various different causes, um, across the community and the region that we operate in. Um, some of the causes there were education, uh, environmental support, uh, so that support was primarily for Trout Unlimited. Uh, they have a great mine land reclamation program that they do, uh, really across the US and a lot, they do a lot of good work here in Colorado, uh, specifically in the Upper Arkansas River Basin, which is where we operate today. So, uh, they do some great work in there and we're proud to, to support that group. Um, so Tyler County's Airgrounds, a lot of other good, uh, committees, initiatives that we've, that we've donated to in 2024. Uh, so volunteer hours there, so we always promote that our employees get out and volunteer, you know, as we can. Uh, the photo there on the right is a picture of our team done, or volunteering down at the Ronald McDonald House in Colorado Springs. Uh, a little bit more of the economic impacts and taxes, uh, mine employed around 430 people last year, uh, in addition to 290 direct indirect suppliers, vendors, um, that kind of thing. 539 million distributed in wages in the US, uh, so this did include some of the corporate offices that Newmont had in the US, so that's not entirely, uh, Purple Creek and Victor, uh, which, which was a substantial part of that. Uh, and we are, Teller County is the largest private taxpayer. Uh, so 2024 taxes toward around 36 million. Not gonna read through, through the entire breakdown there, um, it gives you a little bit of an idea of our economics and sustainability. Right, and then we wanted to start talking a little bit about the mining future. Uh, so now that SSR has kind of worked our way through this initial transition period, uh, with the new company SSR taking control of the mine. Uh, we're really starting to look to the future and we're in the process, very early stages of scoping, uh, potential future expansions. So what are some of those opportunities that might exist to extend mine life beyond what it currently is? Uh, so I'm sure as we've communicated before, the currently permitted mine life, uh, really has closure going all the way out to 2050, uh, with active operations starting to stopping in 2031. What we're looking at is the, what can we do, what opportunities exist to extend that life beyond that and keep the mine active, uh, keep us in this community and keep things operating. That might include looking at infrastructure facilities within our current footprint, uh, potentially outside of our current footprint. Um, but again, in the very early stages of this, just wanted to make sure that we're communicating with you all. Um, keep being transparent through the, through the process, and we'll continue to keep you updated over the next couple years as we work through this process. As part of that, uh, looking at, you know, potential future expansion, we're gonna look at our closure methodology. And a lot of that is in collaboration with the state, really looking at that closure for the entire site, really to support, uh, responsible closure, you know, if we are going to expand as part of that. And then lastly here, just a little bit more on closure. So, uh, our closure plan currently has been approved by the Colorado DNR. Um, we're currently bonded for 319 million with the state to cover any potential closure cost for the mine. Um, and there's those dates I alluded to earlier, so that's the currently permitted life through Amendment 13, which is our most recent permit amendment. Um, and what I was alluding to before is that, that's really what we're looking to, are there additional opportunities to keep the mine operating, uh, beyond that? A little bit of high level on what our closure looks like here at CCNB, really the approved post-mining land use with the state is rangeland and wildlife habitat. Uh, so restoring a facility and a large, large portion of the footprint, um, back to that, uh, which involves a lot of sloping, contouring, a lot of the facilities, all the facilities, um, applying the topsoil growth media and then planting with it, uh, ancient seed mix, some trees, shrubs, and various native species as well. We do trial that. We have in the past, tried, have done a lot of trials of concurrent reclamation, just to see, you know, how this does work in the field, um, and we plan to continue that as well.
Caitlin Maxx, Social Relations Supervisor for CCNB, really save the best for last. Um, I put the slides together so I can do that. Um, so the Q2 community investment, and as a reminder, we're a quarter behind just the way our, our cycle, our review cycle works. Um, so we received 10 applications, uh, requesting $215,450.90. We approved five of those for $29,500. Um, 61% stayed in Teller County, 36% were in Purple Creek, and then 3% went to Fremont County. We supported things like the Butte Theater, um, the UC Health Memorial Foundation, which I'll. The U C Health Memorial Foundation, which I'll get into on the next slide, cripple creek police department, the Fremont Schools Facility Corporation, which supported the Dolly Parton Imagination Library. That's the, the thousand dollars that took Fremont County. And then it's early in the year, but shop with a hero. We're already thinking ahead to that. So we also supported that application. One of the community partnerships that I wanted to highlight was, was U C Health. So we committed to thirty thousand dollars, ten thousand dollars for the next three years, because that's what they anticipate will really take them. To lobby and, and get approval for insurances to cover whole blood on ambulances. And, you know, how I described it at the open house was, you know, if, if someone's injured in a traumatic accident, say out in Skagway or other rural parts of the county. Your chances of making it to the next, to the closest. Trauma center, which is forty five minutes at least, are very slim. So I don't want to misquote them, but. At least, this has been used at least twice. At the time we took this picture, we went and, and chatted with the paramedics. So really, it's, it's providing. Tools for those paramedics to save lives. So it was really a no brainer on, on this one. So. I'm very excited about that. I want to talk about our current community investment committee and strategy and how that looks today. And I promise I'll get to my point. So the role of our current committee members, so we have a diverse group of internal employees who. Are really tasked with reviewing and considering and approving charitable contributions that are in accordance with our development priorities. And in alignment with the investment strategy, which is a public document, you're welcome to review it. And obviously, they're, they're in charge of making sure that none of our contributions violate any anti-corruption laws. So those development priorities that I talked about, area of influence, really focusing on cripple creek and victor, I hope that it's. Felt that, you know, we're trying to bring our contributions closer to home and really focus on our, I'll call you our host communities, because that's really what you are, we're neighbors. And additional consideration for Woodland Park, just based on the number of our employees and contractors and vendors that live there or drive through the area. And then also limited consideration for Fremont County, again, based on our employee base. Our priorities are things like education, local capacity, workforce development, community health and wellbeing, environment and cultural heritage. So that's how it's set up today. It's all based internal. And so that's where we need the, the community's help. So the concept of a community development committee is not new to the mining industry, but it is new to C C and B. So we're looking for volunteers. Right now, we're focusing on cripple creek, victor, goldfield. So there'll be two committees, one for cripple creek, one for victor and goldfield, because obviously you have. Different priorities, different strategic plans for, for each community. So some of the goals is really focusing on local wellbeing, strengthening the community's resilience. Reducing long-term dependency on mining activities, you know, to Tony's point, we're looking at how can we extend our life here? But what happens eventually at some point in the very far, far future? I'd like to retire from mining here, but the far, far future, what happens? What does the community want? To look like at that point in time. And so really focusing this committee will really focus on community identified. Priorities. So this program is in addition to our current investment program. It's not replacing it, it's in addition to. There's going to be no changes to the application process or the eligibility criteria, but now we're giving the community an opportunity to weigh in. So this will be community led. These committees will be five to six. This is new to us, so we're figuring it out right alongside with you, but five to six-ish community members on each committee. And so here's an example. They'll really be tasked with reviewing strategic plans, talking to community members, talking to their neighbors, identifying what's a priority for each community. These are examples that I made up, just based on conversations I've had. So things like Victor and Goldfield have mentioned things like a basketball court, an adventure park, water infrastructure, or, or restoration to the historical buildings. Purple Creek, and again, I made these up. I had no help from anyone else, so don't read into it, but. Things like childcare facility, the pocket park, the sidewalk, skate park, things like that. Those are the kind of projects we're looking at. But we really want the community to have a voice in that and for these projects to be really community led. So these committees will be funded by C C and B. There'll be a set budget. I don't know what that is yet. This is, we're trying to. Launch this by January twenty twenty six is when we're looking to, to kickstart this program. So they'll be tasked, the committee will be tasked with having those conversations, identifying those priorities. Bringing C C and B, that list could be two things, could be ten things. I mean, dream big, right? Bringing that list and then we'll sit down and have a dialogue. We'll have conversation with that committee. What does that look like? What can we accomplish together? Do we need to identify other funders? How can we make this work? And then when we decide on a project or multiple projects, whatever that looks like. We'll sign a community development agreement where C C, C C and B commits to funding X Y Z amount on X Y Z project. So we'll make those commitments. So I hope I explained that well. It's kind of confusing. It was. I told you I'd get to my point eventually, but yeah.
Just out of curiosity, for the committee members, can you give me a speculative idea of what the time commitment would be to serve on those committees or do you know your?
So. Thinking out loud, right? Because it'll really be up to the community members. And we're thinking meeting no more than quarterly, so they'll do quarterly reviews as necessary. We're learning a lot from our, our sister site, Marigold. They launched their committees this year, so I'm stealing a lot of their ideas, to be completely honest. So they do a lot of email communication, they meet quarterly, and so really I'm. We're flexible and, and learning about this and we recognize, you know, there's a lot of committees right now. So we're asking for a lot of. A lot of different time and a lot of different directions from, you know, the key community leaders, but. I really hope that everyone else sees the value in this that I do. And I don't think it's just, it. I don't think it boils down to just community investment, and I think it also creates that dialogue between C C and B and the community, so. I didn't really answer. I don't know. Okay, yeah, I think we're flexible in figuring out what that time commitment is.
Thank you for this.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's great.
I can't take full credit for it, but.
You're right there.
Well, I can't, my boss is here. I can't. Next time maybe. But yeah, is there any other questions about anything in the presentation?
I wouldn't, with the. Community members, will that be community at large wanting to volunteer? Will representatives from the councils, what does it make up look like?
We'd really like it to be, I envision it being community members, not necessarily elected or appointed government officials, but I'd like to see what that turnout looks like first. Sorry to exclude you all, but. I know, I understand. I'd like to see, you know, what kind of interest we get. So we have a QR code. I'll post it on our Facebook. I'll send it out via email. I'll get some flyers printed up. Very simple application interest form, really just name, contact information. Do you live either in cripple creek, victor, or goldfields? And it's not limited to city, city limits. It can be like cripple creek mountain estates. And just tell me a little bit about yourself. Why do you want to serve on the committee? And then what are your expectations from serving on that committee? What are you expecting? From us? Because I really want it to be a mutually beneficial relationship. So I want to make sure that's clear from right from the get go. So I think we're going to figure out. Who's interested and then, and then we may need to open it up to government officials as well, just not coding. Five to six, I think is a good number. Yeah.
I don't think you offended any of us by saying you don't want to. We would all love to see more.
Yeah, we really want it to be community led, but also with input from like strategic plans and. You know, what's a priority for, for the city, so. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right, agenda item eight. Consider approval of resolution twenty twenty five dash one eight, a resolution approving the award of a grant from the Historic Preservation Grantstones. To below-named residents, entrepreneur and or nonprofits of the city of Public Creek, Colorado, County of Tyler, State of Colorado. Start Preservation Coordinator, Jalen Lance.
Hello, council. So we're going to talk about two grants tonight. It should be relatively quick. The first grant we're going to talk about is a residential grant. It is for two eleven North Fourth Street for Philip Palmer. I first have to say that we did amend what you're looking at for the historic preservation recommendation. Unfortunately, an old staff report got stuck in the packet, so you're not looking at what I'm looking at, so I'm going to explain it a little bit. There was an application and you will see that in the application, they had asked for work to be done on their front porch. Restoration, some trim work. Some woodwork and then also some brickwork on the north side of the house. When the H P C met, we noticed that a lot of that brickwork looked like it was water damage. So we were a little bit worried about the approach that we had there being paint on it, because we didn't know if we were going to be trapping more moisture. So what we decided to do was get a little bit more information. We had some masons come out and take a look at it. We didn't get a great consensus on what the appropriate measures would be. So what the H P C decided to do was. Sever the application and approve the portion that had to do with. The front porch, the paint, the woodwork, those kind of things. And then table the brickwork for now until we have a little bit more time to. Figure out what the right course of action is on that. What's probably going to end up happening is going to be. It'll probably end up being seal and paint, but we're just not a hundred percent sure yet. We didn't want to put any more time on it since we're getting close to the end of. Work season when it comes to outdoor work. So what the H P C decided to do on that was. Award the five thousand dollars that would have covered. The porch restoration, the window panes, the dormer repairs, and also add. Gutters to be able to mitigate any more water damage that might be happening currently. So that was an additional one thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars for a total of six thousand nine hundred and thirty with a ten percent match from the owner. And that's one, the work can start immediately on that one as well too, as soon as we're ready to get approved. And I'm going to go ahead and talk about the second one as well, since it's on the same resolution and we can get through this one then. The second one, we are viewing as a commercial grant. It's actually for a nonprofit, it's for the homestead. They are applying to do some work on the pillars that are on their front porch. They have a lot of water damage down there. They got a couple of bids in, two of them were. A combination of repair, paint scraping and painting again. But the third bid they got had an idea to do metal pillars and then wood clad. So they'll look the same, but the longevity of it, stability of it will be a lot easier or a lot better. And also that way, if they get any more water damage down there, since that porch is kind of a low spot down there. They'll just have to repair the wood then. The metal will still stay, it'll still be stable, it'll still last a long time. The requested amount was eleven thousand, two hundred and fifty five dollars. The H P C unanimously voted to approve that and also waived the ten percent match. Since they are a nonprofit and an asset to us here. Does anybody have any questions about those grants?
Same before we move on to questions, Aaron Cody serves on the Old Homestead House Board, so does he need to. Use himself in the conversation or does he need to abstain from the vote or what's the.
I think the practice has been that you would recuse yourself. So. For, to avoid any appearance of inferring, so.
Be recused.
So as you say, you were looking at going at the, the third.
Eleven thousand, eleven thousand, two fifty five, yeah. Yeah, after discussing it, it. The appearance of the pillars will still be the same.
She's saying about the.
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. What was the question again? I'm sorry.
This, you're talking about the homestead?
Oh, no, that's the, that's the. Oh, I see, I was, I was. Never mind.
Okay, so you're looking for eleven thousand and his bid was eleven two?
Eleven two fifty five, yeah.
That's because of the metal.
Yeah, we just thought for longevity's sake, I mean, there probably isn't, in the discussion that we had in the H P C, there probably isn't a lot of load bearing going on there, because that is a pretty short. Porch overhang this there, but like I said, it is kind of a low spot there and they have had conversations about water in the area in the past. And that way, if there is more water damage there, they can take off the wood cladding and just replace the wood cladding and it still looks the same. But the metal will be able to remain, even if they have to replat it.
So by doing that method, they still retain their historic status while they're changing.
They will, yeah, yeah. The part of the conditions of the approval on that one too is to. Make sure that the visual optics remain the same, that there's no, that there's no change. So any of the. Wood trim, wood curvature, any of that kind of stuff that was existing, they'll have to replicate on those, on those pillars.
So I'm assuming the other two bids, were they aware of this? Or what he's doing?
They are, I don't know if they were aware of it while they were bidding it. I know they did become aware of it. And to the best of my knowledge, those bids remained the same.
So Aaron, my other question, on the individual who proposed the bid that they're considering is a former coworker and a personal friend of mine.
So I think the question would be, does that in any way impair your ability to make a. Fair and impartial decision? And if you feel that it does not in any way impair, then. You can state so on the record and I think you could appropriately move forward.
I do not believe it would impair my ability to make a fair decision, but I do just want it to be known for the record that I do have that relationship with Aaron Cody.
So we are not deciding, if it doesn't work, though, we are deciding.
Yes, that is actually something to be clear about on all of these H P grants is that. We make it very clear to the applicants that we don't decide who they get the bids from. We don't recommend anyone. We don't tell them who they have to go with. Money is awarded. We tend to award. What we believe is best for the property after looking at everybody's scope of work. But at the end of the day, if we awarded the eleven thousand, two hundred and fifty five dollars, but the homestead changed their mind and decided that. The wood would be better, that would be within their purview to decide that they wanted to go with one of the other vendors. And then when it came to the end, when they submitted all their paperwork for the checks to be cut, it would just be a less amount that we would end up cutting at the end of the day.
Do you have any questions or discussion? Can I get a motion, please?
I'll make a motion that we approve resolution twenty twenty five dash one eight. I'll second.
Well, please.
Councilor Eric.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Eric, Eric.
Yes.
And we can bring also much.
Thank you very much, council.
Then item B, consider appointing Camille Pata as an ex officio member of the Main Street Advisory Board. I just want to speak to the purpose of this. So the council has already appointed the board members for the Main Street, seven members. Gail Langley, who is the head of Main Street, Colorado, is highly recommending that we have an additional board member, board member, a non-voting member. That is either a council member or a city staff. And so. I would like to consider Camille for that non-voting position as a city liaison, because she's very passionate, number one, about this. Number two, she's very knowledgeable in the area and I think there would be a lot of value in having Camille on the board, so I just wanted to. Open up the discussion with council regarding. More opinions on that matter, if you'd like to proceed with Camille as the non-voting member of the Main Street Board.
I think that should be great. I don't know why she would want to take on her. You don't got enough to do, I guess.
Yeah, I think it's wonderful.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
So then do we vote then? All right, then can I get a motion, please?
I make the motion to appoint Camille and I can't say your last name. As an ex officio member of the Main Street Advisor.
Vote, please.
Councilor Eric.
Yes.
Councilor Bowman.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown.
Yes.
Mayor John.
Yes, thank you, Camille. All right, moving on, agenda item C. Consider approving the contract agreement with community of caring and consider funding for wastewater line in the alley behind the proposed childcare facility. Frank, are you taking a leave?
We've had the. Yeah, she wants it.
Yeah, okay.
Think we've had the workshop on this. Think y'all have asked, asked your questions, if you don't have any issues. We would recommend. That you make your motion if you want to move forward positively, that you make it subject to. We get something from Dola that says they're okay with us allowing. Community of caring to bid that project. Inside the contract.
So currently the. So apparently the, the grant agreement states that the city should be contracting the work, however with the contingency approving that we receive a letter from Dola allowing for community of caring to contract that work. Some of the cities that
And this is just for the wastewater line?
No, no.
What about the wastewater?
It's on
It's the second part.
It's the second part and consider fund. So we're taking one at a time because the first is the contract agreement.
We got to separate this into two areas.
It's two motions. You have to start with the, you've now had a recommended motion for approving the contract. And then again, just for to, to reiterate would need to um, move to approve the contract with community of caring um, subject to receiving comfort from Dola with regard to community of caring contracting for the construction of the building.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Thank you, Eric.
Councilman Eric.
Yes.
Councilman Schlaub.
Yes.
Councilman Bowman.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown.
Yes.
Mayor Durrell.
Yes.
And then the second part of that.
And the second part is um, to consider funding for the wastewater line that runs um, in the alley behind the building.
And what I would recommend there depending on if you want to go the total of what the engineer is estimated that you make a motion not to exceed. If the price actually is less, then we pay for less, but it won't exceed, I guess, that's unless you want it to come back to you if it's a higher number. But right now, this is what you have from the engineer, the seventy-nine thousand.
I was gonna ask Steve, uh, real quick, and this is approved, is this something that you think would happen pretty quick? Or is this, this will be able to get done?
Need to get it done quick because I gotta get the payment down back in the street. Because they can get it, get it moving, we need to.
And, and we need it because again, they're going to be doing work on the land, you know, reshaping and they're going to have to address drainage issues. So you want this out of the way. So getting sewer line in first would be
And then you'd be tapping the current people back into this new line.
Yes. Meanwhile, they have to tap back here.
Well, I think it's important to note for those that weren't at the work session that we do have the money and the budget um, this year to make this happen. And this is something that the city would ultimately need to be doing anyway. So
Yeah, the line was cambered by Steve. You want to touch on that, Steve?
With our fancy new camera?
Yes, um, the new camera, sewer camera we got, we were able to get into the pipe. The pipe is in real bad shape. It's a manhole being placed in certain areas. So moving forward with this in the future, it's one less part that we're going to have to replace.
The engineer's estimate from Catamount Engineering is seventy-nine thousand five twenty-five. That is an estimate for eight inch pipe and you're saying we need to go back to six?
Yes.
And Steve's also going to see if we actually need three manholes or just two. So the price could come down or it could go up depending on the contractor. But my thoughts are to, you know, if you're good with this price, to put it as a not to exceed number.
All right, I agree with that.
And then caring, if it does happen to go over, they're responsible for any of which is
And Aaron, I still need to talk. You mentioned that earlier, you still want to talk about
I think that's going to be, I, I think I understand exactly the approach and I think that's going to be perfectly doable. And so I, I wouldn't expect it would not. So I think the motion would be to approve sharing in the cost of the replacement, the sewer line in an amount not to exceed seventy-nine thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Vote please. Councilman Eric.
Yes.
Councilman Schlaub.
Yep.
Councilman Bowman.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown.
Yes.
Mayor Durrell.
Yes.
Thank you guys.
Community of caring, we um, give you our heartfelt thanks. Uh, we also, as mentioned by Ted, the groundbreaking, we have set uh September ninth, which is Tuesday at two o'clock. Does that work with your schedules?
It does with mine.
I'll make it work.
We'll see. Okay, so again, God bless you on behalf of all the children and families.
Thank you, guys. Right, agenda item D. Consider two council members to participate in an interview selection committee to review applications and interview city per advocates.
I'll do it. I was just gonna say that I would, I would personally say recommend, uh Bruce has got a lot of experience, obviously, with being on the city council and being mayor for a long time and I would say our mayor, if you would be willing to do it too, I would trust in your decisions as well, but if anybody else makes it there, that was my two recommendations would be Bruce and Mayor.
I'm good with that. You four are going to be the ones moving forward and I think it's best you make those decisions.
I'm positive that Frank doesn't want me in the
I support Cody's comment.
So do I need to make a motion to appoint? Uh, make a motion that we appoint, uh Mayor Proton Brown and Mayor Durham as the uh interview selection committee to review applications and interview city per advocates.
I'll second.
Vote please. Councilman Eric.
Yes.
Councilman Schlaub.
Yes.
Councilman Bowman.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown.
Now you can vote.
Yes.
Agenda item E, discuss and consider action regarding parking signs, administrators.
Uh, this is just not necessarily directions, we just have issues uh, around town. Since I got here, we've been having issues with signs being put up on public streets. Aaron has told me many, many times in front of council that it's public streets. Anybody can park on public streets. The only thing we can designate are you know, for fire hydrants, of course, we mark those red, uh, blue for a handicap and then loading zones. But other than that, we can't designate people parking on public streets that are for private parking. We can't do that. But we still have some and some Steve didn't even know about. Uh, we do have the area on behind Golden Nugget. Those houses along there. There are signs on both ends of the streets as resident parking on them. And then we've had some issues here recently. They've come up regarding parking. Uh, it, when I first got here, Elks, I had parking on Fourth Street that said, uh, Elks Parking Only. And I've told them they can't have that. So I think we've removed signs. But um and recently with Kelly, we put a sign up, Public Works did, it's for her, but we can't do it. I told Steve to remove the sign. We can't put up can't put up signs. And I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page going forward. That these signs have to be removed. We cannot, we did, I will say this, back when Chaminade was getting some constructed, we had a lot of people in town constructing. So we asked Chaminade to put signs out at the church and in peoples that are living around there to try to put up signs as for no parking in front of those houses so that people could park. Cause I mean, they were parking everywhere, as y'all will know. Well, that's over with. So we don't have that issue right now. And I'm saying during events, we probably will have uh, people parking, which we tried to control that this last week with the vet rally. We tried to say, we're like, say on Car Street, we left one side for resident parking and put the other side for motorcycle parking. So it's, we allowed for both. And the chief and Steve, we all got together and, and uh Jim Ware was totally, and I think everything went well. I didn't, did you get any compliments, Chief? So Steve? I don't think we had. So we still try to do that for events that are occurring in town. We still want people to be able to get to their house and not everybody parked there, but just want to make sure we're all on the same page. Or if we need to do something different, then let's talk about it, you know, if we need to, I don't know if you were home rule, if you could do things different. I think pretty much it's still public uh, property and still open to public. So I don't even know that home rule would change. That probably wouldn't. So go ahead. You have a comment to?
Just to that point, it's even a statutory city would not be preempted from having some sort of a parking program. Because you, there isn't anything that would conflict with state statute particularly. Um, if you were it might be a different process for Bennett Street to an extent, it's state highway.
Bennett's not a state highway. All the, all the roads in town are now are city streets. We do have the bypass for sixty-seven, but and for Teller One which is Masonic and Myers, but it's, but Bennett was definitely city owned, not a city street. What, what that we've done in the past, and I don't know at one time, I understand before chief, they had a program where they gave parking permits in residential areas to the residents. And you had to have a permit to park in those areas.
To pay twenty-five dollars a year.
And that went away. I don't know why it went away. It might have been a legal question that came up about our public parking, but in the residential areas, they did have that for a long time, that residents could come down and get a parking permit to park in front of their house. And if but I, I, it went away years and years ago, right, Chief? Steve, before, before you started as chief, so so I don't know if that was a, something legal came up about that because it is public street and here you are designating it for that resident to park there. So I'm not recommending that. I'm just trying to throw everything out on the table. So council understands the issues, but it's kind of been an issue ongoing around town. Uh, we did go over and talk to the mechanics at the, regarding Kelly's issue, but a lot of these areas do have alleys. And, and a lot of them do have off backyard parking. Uh, Steve, Steve only uh, maintains those alleys if they're requested. There are some alleys that we don't have open because they've never, people haven't accessed those alleys, so we don't maintain them. But if if there is a request, I guess Public Works would look at those alleys to see if we need to open them up so people could park in the rear. And some of the people do have parking in the rear, so and there's a few that probably don't have access to alleys, but most of our blocks have alleys designated alleys, whether they're maintained or we've opened them, I don't know.
I'd like to make a request if we could, if Carrier or anybody could look back to what we originally uh, granted the conditional permit, I think it was for the Creek Garage. That was a long time ago. But I know it was discussed during that. I don't know if it was in writing or part of the permit that we just assumed that they had that parking lot next to the building. That that was going to be used to park the cars in there when they're waiting, worked on. And I know that was brought up, but I don't actually, we had discussion if it was actually in the ordinance. But if we could maybe go back, I know it's a long time. But I just think it was the understanding of council that that's what was going to happen. But now you've got cars parked on both sides of Masonic for two or three weeks, months. And it's dangerous intersection right there. When you pull up there, hours coming down Masonic and they're going pretty quick and you pull out and you can't see. And it's a dangerous area.
A little bit about that, uh, talking to the owner. Uh, one of the problems he has, and I've talked to chief about it and code enforcement, is some of these vehicles, these people call the wrecker to bring it to there and they want a price. What's it going to cost me to fix? And so he gives them a price and they say, oh, I can't afford that. Well, the wrecker's dropped it in the street. It's, it's, it can't be dri, it's not drivable. So he says, I've told them, they gotta move it. You can't leave it in the street. But it's, that's not on him because somebody a tow truck driver dropped it there in the street. So the chief and I have been talking about that. We might need to look at our ordinance on and it's, it's just like a car that stopped on a state highway. They tagged the car and if it stays there for twenty-four hours, forty-eight hours, I, forty-eight, it's tug.
I mean, it's considered inoperable, operable vehicle. I don't know how long it could sit there.
Yeah, forty-eight hours, but we're talking about that. We might need to do some ordinance on them, but
I'm not saying anything bad against Aaron, you know, he does, he does a lot of work. He's very busy. We need him, but it's just something.
He's agreed to work with me with, with the residents in the area, but uh, some of those, he says I can't control, you know, if they tow a vehicle and drop it off and they don't like my price. He said, we've called this guy, I don't know how many times on the truck. I guess it's south, it's still there, huh? But he, they've called him and told him, you gotta move it, it's going to get towed. And then of course, we haven't towed it, but
Well, maybe he's gonna have some dialogue with these tow truck guys and say, you don't drop anything off until
We might need to look at the ordinance, beefing up the ordinance on. Can the tow truck driver drop it off on a city street and just leave it there? I don't know. Maybe, maybe we have an ordinance that says they can't do that. So anyway, that's another conversation, but yes, I'm sorry.
Is this mean that my son that ends Phelps left behind? Somebody bigger than me, get it up and
Steve tomorrow?
All of my neighbor is going to be sad because she uses that to gauge where exactly
Stop.
from the fire.
Yeah, Chaminade put yours and the churches, they put a bunch of them around. I thought they picked most of them up. Still have yours. It's heavy. They were using concrete in those buckets instead of them up to keep our people from parking. So we'll get it picked up. But we're, are we, is there any question or do we need to look at anything else? Are we all on the same page?
My opinion is whatever the law is, is what we need to evolve. We need to do it consistently, set it up there and then then
I know, I know we get off subject here, but chief, is there, I'm sure there's got to be some kind of law about parking close to corners. Especially in intersection. I mean, I've seen cars that right, they park right on the corner.
Right.
Areas around.
Well, and I previously asked about putting a stop sign up there, but you know, to Steve's point, you know, at that intersection, but when the fog trips are coming up, I mean, that would be the easiest way to mitigate it, but at the same time, it creates a burden.
There used to be one there till the sewer line came through, they redid all the Masonic.
But I'll agree, that is, I hate that intersection. Um, it makes me nervous every time. And I talked to several community members who say the same thing. That now to that point, I know you said there hasn't been an accident there at that intersection yet, but yes.
You can't see someone coming from the west.
No.
Coming up the hills, so um, and there is, there are, there are laws. Uh, I've worked with Steve. Second Street, Masonic, Myers, um so far from a stop sign, so far from a crosswalk, so um, specifically in the middle of the block, like Chaminade's got there on Bennett. There's a distance, you can't be so close. So sometimes those random buses park right there at the bump out and you can't see someone till they step out. So we, we're working on that. Um, as far as the vehicles, there's state statute um, abandoning vehicle, abandoned vehicle on public property, um, which would authorize us after forty-eight hours to tow. Um, but there again, what do we do with it? And where does it go? And that's the city each dead if they don't come and get it. It's sitting there on the street for three, four or five months because that's where it is. They may just
Yeah, Aaron's side yard.
So
It's super, it's pretty
Here we have, carbon is illegal vehicle. And I think you've got one on First Street, just west of your place. It's a little, that little black Ford Maverick, it's been sitting there on like down with Europe.
It sometimes moves.
It's legal. But it's just parked there. So we can find an owner, we can't reach an owner. So there again, that's why we're looking at something else we could do is is that up in is, it's licensed, but
You should uh, get with me after this, I know the guy.
Okay.
And one more comment since we um, on, I noticed this a few weeks ago on car coming down the hill to second. Going west, um uh, the no park sign by the side at second, it's no parking, arrow points east. Up there by the entrance to the employee lot, there's one. No parking, arrow points, okay, so it's just because it was in the middle of the street by the liquor store. It had yeah, it's like, well, can we
That, I think those went up for the construction. And I mentioned it to Frank and Steve, they got those moved. And I mentioned it to Frank and Steve, they got those moved, so.
Cause there were like thirteen cars parked in there between the no parking signs.
We did get a request, since we're talking about parking. Since we have the crosswalk up, uh, and the plan was we'd take the stop signs down on. Car and leave the stop sign on and put a sign on the second street that says cross traffic does not stop, so people now know that those signs gone. But when Steve and I were talking about it, uh, I, I wanna look at the traffic code to see if there's any pre. Crosswalk signs that are required, cause I don't know, I haven't talked to Cliff, but. People aren't used to a crosswalk there, so we're gonna look at, see if signs are required. The other thing they requested is on car going eastbound from the. Crosswalk, they want us to paint that a loading zone for buses that might come in, I think they're maybe bringing bands in. The problem I have, and I talked to Steve about the other day, if your car going westbound and a bus is parked there. You can't see people that are in the crosswalk or you can't see the light flashing if a bus is sitting there. So the people are gonna be walking out into car, they'll see the light flashing over here maybe. But you won't see the people coming out of the crosswalk till they're behind the bus, so I don't know. We might have to market no parking, cause I think we have to protect the crosswalk. From both ever direction to make sure people that are traveling on car, if we're taking out the stop signs, it's gonna be coming down.
We have the little yellow diamond ones with the people across.
They're at the, they're at the crosswalk.
But can we put them ahead of either?
We're, we were gonna look at what the state requirement is for notification of crosswalk.
Probably gonna put those signs up.
Okay.
I walked all night, the other day after I talked with you. There's a hundred and thirty-five people in that area that we're talking about. If I remember right, you can't park ten twenty-five feet of a crosswalk, so that gives us twenty-five feet. The bus can't be in, and you're only requesting eight by feet from the loading dock back. So there's still gonna be another gap there. That small car might park.
If we don't market no parking, then anybody can park there, which it could be a bus. It could be anything.
Right, I like that, we'll, we'll, we'll support you, we need to run that area.
I understand, no, I understand. I understand the request, I just.
And we'll support the city, so.
I know you will, I just concerned about big vehicles parking right there, so I'm thinking we might wanna just market no parking. Because I do think coming down the hill, if people park there. If it's a big vehicle, you're not gonna see the flashing light, and you won't see the people standing there until you're already there. Yeah, that's my concern. Well, and our speed limit is twenty-five, but you know people go faster than down that hill than twenty-five, so.
I just had one more thing, while we're talking about that area, maybe, I don't know, talk to you guys. I know you had a really cool loading dock with trucks that pull in there and load, but I've seen a lot more frequently that these semis are parked out in the street. And you, they're blocking three quarters of the street, ending up at the semi, or the, the trucks, is jackknack in there, but. It's, I see it happen a lot more. I, I know you guys had a really cool dock in there, but I don't know, the trucks are big. Yeah, I, I just watch the cars come down the hill, I'm like, I gotta wait till they go around you.
Well, you know, and park, making it a loading zone for people to park there and get the stuff out like a truck. I guess I'm not a problem with that, but I still think away from that. Yeah, it's real close right there, from the loading until the crosswalk side, that's my concern, anyway. Okay, so we've kicked parking, I think we're all on the same page. No, I just wanna make sure, because we're gonna enforce taking the signs down, y'all might hear stuff, and I just think this needs to be public. But we've talked about it, and this is what state law is.
When we take residential parking signs down, I haven't, I didn't look at that particular issue. Well, we can't have our sun parking for hills, parking for so-and-so, parking for. But I haven't looked at the more generic issue of residential parking zone. Although I think it creates a long enforcement issue, because how? How is, how is code enforcement? And I know it's a residential cost, so I think, you know, but we can talk about.
Or somebody visiting.
Some of the problem you have is we have commercial areas with residences in those commercial areas. Then you have a business like Kelly's issue, you got a business next door that's in a business district. But you have residents there, so how do you say, okay, well, this is residence parking and that's. Where, that's the issue we're kinda running up against, and not just there, it's, it's around town, the other side of it.
But I would just caution that. You hold off taking down signs that just say residential parking on. For now, cause I haven't.
Okay, so we'll wait. Okay, alright, thank you, ma'am.
Moving on to agenda item F. Consider approval of a letter of commitment to adopt the Colorado Energy Code as outlined in HB two-two dash one-three-six-two. For the Colorado Department of Energy, Energy Code Adoption and Enforcement Grant Application, Building Official Ken Harstfield.
Evening Council Mayor. As summarized, uh, this is, it was a grant available to help adopt new energy codes. Part of that process would require us to also adopt new building codes, increasing from the two thousand eighteen to at least the two thousand twenty-one. The new energy codes do have a number of provisions, uh, such as. Making EV houses EV ready. So you have a electrical provisions and panels sized to have the EV chargers. Also be solar ready, so that it's ready to have solar photovoltaics installed on the roof, so the panel needs to be sized. It also has a requirement that, uh, the houses be electric ready. So you may want a glass water heater, you have to wa- provide in panel for an electric water heater. Uh, with a stove, it also has those requirements, so there's a lot of requirements there. So basically. The grant's a good thing, but it has some requirements, the grants, uh, provides. Ten thousand, one hundred twenty-five thousand dollars in. Grants with no match to help, uh, we would hire a consultant to update our codes. I've talked to four different consultants on that, and pricing is ranging from twelve thousand to thirty-five thousand dollars. But this would be at no expense, so. Oh, initial request was to. Authorize a letter of commitment to upgrade the codes, but there's an underlying requirements. That I think council needs to consider before we pursue this grant, is that? Is it time to upgrade our codes? We're on the two thousand eighteen version, uh. Regional Building Department, Teller County are now on the twenty-twenty-one code. They adopted it before the deadline, so they don't have to adopt the new energy. Uh, other local jurisdictions are still on two thousand fifteen, there's still some municipalities in all that other than two thousand twelve code. So. Grant applications are due at the end of the month, that's why it's coming to you now. The address, getting the letter of amendment authorized. And a couple other application forms and budgets are submitted, so we're on track to meet that deadline. If we get approval on the letter of amendment tonight, again, there's an underlying, do we want to update our building codes at this time?
The only thing I knew, I didn't.
That's the state energy code.
It's the state energy code, it's requires.
Yeah, it's not in the N C. You update your code, you have to.
Not the new energy.
I was not, I was not familiar with, uh. You're required, cause you said here it says Teller County and Pike Big Regional Building Department have a twenty-twenty-one ICC. Uh, I know there's Teller County doesn't require you to have the standoff set.
The timeframe.
For solar and they require you to have the spaces in the panel for solar or for. Electric vehicle, you have to have the spaces available, but you don't have to have provisions out there for us. Through those, but they require this extra spaces in the panel in case anybody does in a huge.
Uh, Teller County Regional adopted the code before the deadline of June thirty-first, thirtieth of two thousand twenty-four. So they would not require to adopt the full state energy code. If they had waited two days and done it in July, they would have to meet these requirements and while they. Would have to get more into the details of it, that I believe at least conduit needs to be provided for these. Uh, space in the panel box needs to be provided, I'm not sure the conductors need to be installed. But you need to make provisions for those, plus electric water heaters, electric ranges, electric furnaces, all those things need to be. Prepared for easy installation.
It's not just electrical, there's, uh, requirements on windows, there's more insulation required. Uh, in the houses, I guess we're, I, I told you, and this is a council decision, because you all adopt codes. We're having a hard enough time getting housing right now, and we're fixing to dump another twenty to thirty thousand. On the price of a new house if we adopt codes. I don't think we're recommending it, but it's your decision to adopt the energy code, it's not, and an update to building.
If we were to, it says here you can adopt the twenty-twenty-one or twenty-twenty-four.
Yes.
For to enable to get these grants.
Correct, we have to.
So if you adopted the twenty-twenty-one, you're not necessarily going. The full energy code than the twenty-twenty-four.
We would have to adopt the state energy codes. In the twenty-twenty-four version of the ICC, the electrical code, it basically nears what the state code is currently. Or what, what the new energy code for the state is. So. If we want to update our codes, I certainly recommend we pursue the grant and issue the letter of commitment. But I don't recommend that we update the codes.
Yeah, I don't know that we put another.
Eventually you're gonna have to, eventually you're gonna update your code, and we don't know when that'll be, future council, but.
The people can get moved into and then.
I just think it's not a, I mean, the money's available there to help us adopt codes, I just don't know that you wanna put that burden on. You're just not getting a few houses built.
I think it makes sense at this time.
So you wanna pursue, trying to grant the amount of big codes? You can't pursue the grant. So we can't do that.
Oh, the, the grant is only if you're gonna update your codes.
And I'm sure the grant will be there in the future. Possible.
I don't know, I haven't heard all of what's going on with the state budget that they're wanting right now, but they're way upside.
Grant applications are due at the end of the month for this round, I'm not sure if future rules.
There's no action if you don't wanna do it, if you just move on, or you can take a motion not to, or whatever.
Thank you.
Thank you. And agenda item G, consider approval of the intergovernmental agreement for the twenty-twenty-five twenty-eight election, acting city.
Well, Mayor, so what the intergovernmental agreement is, is just need it signed so that the county. And city can do a coordinated election.
Make it a motion.
Governmental agreement, twenty-five, for coordinated election.
I'll second, vote please.
Councilman Trinary?
Yes.
Councilman Schott?
Yep.
Councilman Bowman?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Mayor, yes. Agenda item H, consider authorizing the submitted application for state revolving fund, Administrator Fixelto.
This is, uh, based on what we did last week with the workshop about talking. About it going ahead and applying for the, uh, state revolving fund to do utility work up to five million. Uh, two million sewer, three million water. We have, like we talked about earlier briefly, we have money in this year's budget that we could put in next year's budget that pays the. Debt service payment already, so. Really, this is a motion, do you wanna move forward, I kinda need that, we would then start the process of getting. The disadvantaged community designation again, which is what we have to have. To go into the grant, the grant, uh, of the loan grant is, uh. Due by October fifth, we've already, Monet and I have already touched base with Adam with Aqua Works. He's already sent us the paperwork, so it's really, uh, Adam and Monet working together to get the paperwork in. Adam's got all the doc, the engineered plans, so we submit those with the application and. We talked about, uh, you know, the numbers that he gave us are about a year, year and a half old. So we'll probably, we, he just said it doesn't matter, we can move things around with SRF once we. Bid it, and if the bids come in higher than what we could do, then we'll have to cut a few things to stay within that budget, but. He said they're really easy to work with when it comes to, to that, so.
That's great, thank you for doing this with some people.
Yeah.
Well, it's, it's the deadline, and if we apply it now, and if we get the funding this fall, we have an opportunity to go out for bid. After the first year, I don't know how long they take to do the award, but. But if we got it moving, maybe we could have it out for bid, some, get some of it done next year, I don't know that contractor can get. Five million dollars worth of pipe in the ground up here in six months, but.
Just depends on the contract.
And we'll be starting on the east side, that's where most of our issues are for public consumption. We have major INI, which is inflow infiltration into our sewer system, when we get snow melt or when we get. Uh, rain events, uh, that side of town, we've done surveys of our sewer system with. Flow monitoring devices, and that, that line that comes from the east side. It has a lot of runoff water in it, and we're treating that water at the wastewater point, doesn't have to be treated, it's storm water. So we'll concentrate over there, a lot of those water lines are also old and they're, uh, not looped. So part of this will be replacing the water and the sewer lines in those streets, so then officially we'll get them paved and.
Do you plan on, do we plan on looping them as well?
Some of the lines will be looped, yes, it's, it's all in the design that, uh, Adam, when we sat down with Adam, what, two years ago, I guess? And just to let everybody know, all of these lines that are, we got the funding, uh, we got a million dollars. Four hundred thousand from DOLA and three hundred and three hundred from the SRF fund, a million dollars. It didn't cost the city anything, and Adam, uh, has done ten million dollars worth of engineering on, um. On that million dollars, actually, he didn't use all the millions, so we've actually given him more lines. And he's actually engineering those to try to eat up the million dollars of grant we got from SRF and. DOLA a couple of years ago, so we'll have, after we do this five million, we'll still have five million of sewer to loot. Which we talked about, but that'll be a future discussion, but if y'all wanna move forward, then give us direction.
So this is a motion?
Yes, I'd like to get your motion and vote to, to submit the application.
I'll make a motion that we authorize the submitted application for the state revolving fund.
Vote please.
Councilman Trinary?
Yes.
Councilman Schott?
Yes.
Councilman Bowman?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Darren?
Yes.
Thank you.
Agenda item I, second reading in public hearing to consider approval of ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash zero-three. An ordinance determining to follow the provisions of the Uniform Election Code for the November twenty-twenty-five coordinated election, acting city character.
So this is like the IGA, this is an ordinance. It says that we will go through provisions, um, of the Uniform Election Code, the coordinated election.
So then I open up to a public comment at this moment. Alright, at this time I will open up to public comment, is there anyone who would like to speak in favor? Um, anyone who wishes to speak against? Right, is there is no comment, can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
Close public hearing.
Judge, vote please.
Councilman Trinary?
Yes.
Councilman Schott?
Yeah.
Councilman Bowman?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Darren.
Yes, snowy.
Will the record reflect that the mayor made the motion?
Oh.
Yes.
I had it his tone.
I have it his. I have.
Public hearing, but motion to approve, but, oh, I'm sorry.
Hey, you're there. We're getting closer, Aaron, that's right.
Oh, it's nice. Um, alright, so then can I get a motion to approve ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash zero-three?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash zero-three, second.
Vote please.
Councilman Trinari?
Yes.
Councilman Bowman?
Yes.
Councilman Shad?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Darren.
Yes, thank you, council.
Agenda item J?
Um, use me mayor before we move on. Can we please recess for five minutes? And I have to recuse myself from the next.
Then, oh, you don't need a bathroom break?
Well.
I apologize, I thought you were.
I didn't realize you were wanting to do bathroom.
No, I'm good, I'm good.
But I'll do my recusal before break.
Thank you, you're good.
She has to refuse cuz she works for.
Yep.
So many. These next three items. Thank you, miss.
Body break. No, I don't, no, I just, I'm good.
Finish her up.
Alright, agenda item J, Sixth Amendment, is this a consideration of approval?
It is.
Um, so consider approval of the Sixth Amendment, um, to the development agreement for Full House Entertainment, Administrator Solotan.
Just mayor, the next three are regarding Full House. If you'll remember, we talked about this, uh. They had a little bit of issue to finish, like First Street, a few things they needed to finish up. Their, their Fifth Amendment expired July fifteenth, and they came to us asking us for a little more time, so. The council agreed at that time to extend it till September fifteenth for two months, and I think you're pretty much finished. Uh, you wanna?
Thank you, mayor and city council. Yes, thankfully, we're, oh, I'm sorry, uh, a courtman representing Full House Resorts. I live in Houston, Texas. Uh, my second home is Kripik Creek, Colorado. I spent most of my time outside, as you can tell. Uh, thankfully, we are now complete with First Street. The inlets are installed, uh, all of, uh, all of the inlets and storm. We've tested it, uh, on First Street to the extent that we could test it. Starting on, uh, Monday, we will be going around all of the inlets and all of the storms and all of the, uh. Uh, manholes, and we will be going through to make sure they're completely clear of all debris. Uh, I've already told Public Works, we were starting that on Monday. That's just kind of the last piece of the storm piece. Um, we're, we feel like we're substantially complete. I've met with Ken. Um, and I think we've got a, you know, a handful of little tiny little items that he completed, but was substantially complete. Thank you for your patience.
Did we get the survey?
Yeah, we, we have submitted, uh, the license agreement, uh, documents and the exhibits and the maintenance agreement. Exhibits, we've submitted all those, and we've signed the Sixth Amendment also, sent that through. I think we are current in all documents.
I think so, I, um, just need to touch base with, um. If there's between on building subordination and consents and lenders and landlords.
I think, I think we provided that also, but.
I think I got consents, but I don't believe I got subordination.
Okay.
So we'll be talking.
Do you need me to do anything with her?
To add another day to the count, to the calendar today.
No, no problems.
So Erin, the other thing Ken and I talked about today is, of course, they're making their payments monthly, and they were up, they're up on those payments. Last one's December, and he doesn't think, based on the development agreement, he can issue a certificate of occupancy until those are paid. I just wanna confirm that, so we're.
Yeah, and I did confirm that with Ken today, and I think we would plan on accelerate that payment.
That's fine.
So that, you know, we would wait until December to get that done.
That's Charles' decision, but you do have till December to make that.
Sure.
So, but they're up to par on all their payments.
And we, I think we paid for all the permit fees and everything else, so I think we're, as far as I'm concerned, I think the record is good. Uh, and I've asked, uh, Public Works and Ken and, and Frank if there's anything else we need to do, and I, I think we're in great shape, so.
Something that's not part of the agreement again is that parking lot, it's to the building and that drain time. You know, between the P D and your building, you know, we're gonna put a curb up on that building and then to keep the water away from the building, I think. And the sidewalk has.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. That's on the horseshoe building?
Right.
Yeah, uh, it's not part of our development agreement, but we, we, we did agree to fix that, repair that sidewalk. Concrete guys are here next week to wrap up all the little loose ends related to that, but we did. The car manner work that you guys asked us to take care of, the alley work you asked us to take care of. Uh, car, car avenue work you asked us to take care of, and then we'll finish up, but then it's done.
Yeah, we had some concrete work up there in the corner of Fourth, and, and they went and fixed all of that concrete. We had some issues with the concrete sidewalk.
And I recognize I do have two parts with side of team. All that, so.
I think the only other thing is the typical reimbursement agreement for the attorney's fees of the town, city and crews. So there, I assume they're up to date.
I'd check on that, probably not. We'll double it, the cinema bill.
So just to confirm your, you are confident that September seventeenth date is going to respond to the.
I think we're there, yes, ma'am.
We, we were hoping that before y'all read the, the second reading that they would have everything complete. I think that pretty much there.
Yeah, we're there.
There was a few little losses, but. Right?
And I love being in Kripik Creek, so.
You guys are doing a good job, I have really.
Yeah, it looks really nice. And I think that, you know, the Public Works and, and Ken and Frank, you guys have been great to work with. Thank you, staff also for being so helpful. Uh, appreciate all of your help and all of your support.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
So, and this is a motion? Can I get a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the Sixth Amendment to the Development Agreement for Full House Entertainment.
Vote please.
Councilman Trinari? Councilman Shad?
Yes.
Councilman Bowman?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Darren.
Yes. Agenda item K, second hearing and public hearing to consider approval of ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash zero-four. An ordinance amending prior an ordinance is vacating a portion of Second Street within the city of Kripik Creek. As described in this ordinance, Administrator Solotan.
Yes, mayor, again, this has been extended right along with the development agreement, uh. We've held on to Second Street until they meet everything in the requirements of the development agreement and get everything completed, and so. We extended this also to September seventeenth to make sure.
And it is, um, subject further to the finalization of the, the ordinances are subject further. To, um, before they're final, to the completion of the drainage agreement and the license. So that those, those have to be finished in order to make these ordinances official and be recorded and conveyed.
So we're gonna bring those back, the license agreement.
Yes, we do need to bring those to, to council.
And that's this one and that's one, but you can hold public hearing and see if anybody has any comments on this ordinance.
On just, hey.
This one first, which is Second Street.
Alright, yeah, I will open up public hearing at this time. Would anyone like to speak in favor of this ordinance? Anyone opposed? Cause there is no public comment. Can I get a motion to close?
One second.
Vote please.
Councilman Shad? Councilman Bowman?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Darren.
Yes. Alright, can I get a motion for the item?
Make a motion to approve ordinance number two-zero-two-five dash zero-four. One second.
Vote please.
Councilman Shad?
Yeah.
Councilman Bowman?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Darren.
Yes. Agenda item L, second reading and public hearing to consider approval of ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash zero-five. An ordinance amending previous ordinances, vacating a portion of an alley within the city of Kripik Creek, described in this ordinance, Administrator Solotan.
Same thing.
Thank you. At this time, I will open up to public hearing. Would anyone like to speak in favor of approving this ordinance? And please state your name.
Hi, my name's Kelly Fane, and first I'm supposed to thank you guys for letting me talk, which I haven't done any other time. So this alley, is this the alley between Masonic, the Dead Ends and the Shaminex? You guys aren't gonna close that one, are you?
The alley that's already closed is where the building is sitting right now.
The building is already there.
Yeah, you can't really do a whole lot about that. I think it's permanent. But do you think you could maybe, uh, make the west side of that building blend in with the city and put some brick on it, please? Thank you, girl.
Need further comments? Is there some additional comment? Can I get a motion to close the public hearing? Vote please.
Councilman Shad? Councilman Bowman?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Darren.
Yes. Alright, can I get a motion?
I will make a motion to approve ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash zero-five, second.
Vote please.
Councilman Shad?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Bowman?
Yes.
Mayor Darren.
Yes. Thank you all so much for being here this evening. This meeting is adjourned.
So glad to see that.